Good evening and welcome to this workshop for the Board of Education. I am Board President Joanna Becht Tobin. Tonight, the Board will learn more from Superintendent George Arlato about upcoming changes to quarantining of students as a result of exposure to persons with COVID-19 and to contact tracing protocols. This workshop is open to the public, however, there is no public testimony. This workshop is being streamed live on Anarundel County Public Schools YouTube channel. Thank you so much for joining us. Before we begin, I would just like to remind my colleagues of some protocols. We will have some presentations. We will each have an opportunity to ask two questions. This is a workshop, and so it's the beginning of information gathering. There may be opportunity for further follow-up questions following this workshop should they emerge. And with that, Dr. Arlato, I'd like to turn it over to you.
Thank you very much, Dr. Tobin. Thank you, members of the Board, for getting together, granting us this meeting. I know that everyone's busy, particularly this time of year. So again, thank you for coming together on short notice. As a, I requested the meeting via Dr. Tobin to spend some time with you this evening to discuss some of the implications to the Board's recent decision to no longer quarantine close contacts that are asymptomatic. So since the Board's decision on Wednesday, or during this past, during your meeting last week, I've been working with my staff, as well as Dr. Kalyana Raman and his team at the Department of Health, on how best to operationalize this decision of the Board. So the purpose is, is tonight is in bringing the Board together, is to be certain that each of you understands how we AACPS will continue this work moving forward. So as we continue to work with our partners at the Department of Health, the decision was made that we would no longer contact trace as it makes little sense to identi, to go through the process of contact tracing, identify close contacts, and then not take any action with those close contacts as they are, as long as they are symptomatic, I mean asymptomatic, they will remain in school, they will not quarantine. Any student that, of course, is positive for COVID will continue to isolate for 10 days. And any student that is symptomatic should quarantine and test. Those pieces are still in place. And although the Board's decision is that no asymptomatic student will quarantine, there are some exceptions that I wanted the Board to be aware of, and that's in large, that's a large part of why we are here this evening. So there are examples like household close contacts will still have to quarantine, as will close contacts in the childcare settings. For example, before care and after care, they have their own rules that we must follow. And additionally, those close contacts identified by an external entity will also have to quarantine. So somebody outside of AACPS, as we would go through the process. So I guess sort of the best way to, to, to wrap your head around that is it's important to make the distinction between those close contacts related to school or school activities and those identified by the Department of Health or another external entity, say maybe a doctor's office that you went in to get tested, will also have to quarantine. So there will be some students that will have to quarantine depending on, on the specifics of their case and as it relates or not directly to AACPS. And then I know certainly Dr. Kay is gonna, he's got lots to say about each of these, about each of these areas. But certainly those students that are identified as part of an outbreak will also have to quarantine because outbreaks are determined by the Department of Health, not AACPS. And certainly, the Department of Health retains their authority to impose quarantining and closures, regardless of the decision that we have made, that the Board has made. And I know that Dr. Kay has got some things to say about that, and then, then we're glad, he and I are glad to take some questions. So let me turn it over to Dr. Kay. I know he's got some information to share with you. And as always, Dr. Kay, thank you taking time out of your busy schedule to spend with us.
Thank you, Dr. Arlato, and thank you to the Board. I just wanted to thank you for having this time this afternoon or this evening to discuss this issue. It's obviously top of mind and give you a little sense of where we are as a county, just to frame this discussion, a county and a state to frame this discussion, and then talk a little bit more about how, how we, how we think about this issue with school, with schools and what we're doing for students. So in the county, what we're seeing is that the situation is getting worse in the sense that COVID is spreading. We're seeing our hospitalizations, they've more than doubled in the past three weeks in the, in the two county hospitals, to nearly 100, 100 folks hospitalized for COVID. We're seeing outbreaks, and Dr. Arlato mentioned outbreaks. We look at outbreaks across a variety of settings. Schools is only one of them, nursing homes, assisted living facilities, corrections, homeless, homeless shelters, any situation where there's a lot of people who are, who are more vulnerable are brought together is considered a, the setting that we would, we would investigate for outbreaks. We're seeing outbreaks increase. We've seen over a two-thirds increase in outbreaks over just the past two weeks. Excuse me. We're just starting to get some data from the Maryland Department of Health in terms of percent positivity over the past two weeks. That's increased from five to 10%. Obviously, there's a gap in data, but we know the cases are increasing because all the other indicators that go with that are going up. And even with the schools, we're seeing the number of cases amongst school-aged students is increasing, right? And so that's the direction that we're headed over the next few, few weeks to a month or more even. We need vaccinations to continue to increase, and there's continued uptake of that. But we do have to be realistic about the timescale that vaccinations work on. Somebody gets, starts getting vaccinated now, they're not gonna get that full protection for another six weeks, right? Somebody needs boosters, needs to come now and get it, but there's all of a sudden, everybody's coming in. So there's a lot of moving pieces, and I think we need to make sure that as we are looking at what we want to do in schools, we're not just looking over the long term, but we're also looking at the short-term piece and how we're bringing that all together. Because we do need to, we do need to look at how we keep students in school over the next couple of months, which are gonna be really challenging, to be quite honest, because of that rising case rate. And how do we do to do that in a way that allows us to not just keep them in there for the next two weeks, but for the next two months, right? Because one of the things that's really important to remember about what we're doing with contact tracing and quarantine is really meant to decrease spread, decrease the chances of outbreaks, and keep more students ultimately in classrooms, right? If you don't do contact tracing, if you don't do quarantining, you run the risk particularly at higher case rates, like we're seeing, we're gonna see more outbreaks. And so you end up paying for it anyway with closures and more, more children being taken out of the classroom. But now they're being taken out because they're sick, not because they're quarantined and we broke that transmission. So we do need to balance those two factors. It's not easy, but it is something that we do need to consider, particularly at this moment. When we look at options for decreasing quarantine, something that Dr. Arlato and both of our teams have been talking about for, for a good number of weeks, months now. We recognize this, both from an operational standpoint, the burden of contact tracing on both the Health Department and the, and the school system staff, and also the impact on students in terms of missing days in school. And so when we look at, when we look at what options there are to, to keep kids in, in the classroom, I think it was a num, probably about a month ago, when we talked about the modified options and that the ones that came out from the Maryland Department of Health, the Maryland State Department of Education, some modified options in terms of keeping students in the classroom, things like test-to-state protocols, weekly screening testing, and then modify quarantine with, well, with, with consistent mask usage. Those were three of the additional options that were put on the table. In, in, in looking at and reading about the decision that the Board made last week, I think our assumption is that it tracks along with option three, the modifying quarantine when mask usage is consistent. One of the core pieces of that is that it is identified as the high, posing the highest risk for in-school transmission, though it does ensure that with the mask usage that we are decreasing the number of students being quarantined. One of the core pieces of that is that it requires both the contact, both between the person who has COVID and the close contact to both be masked in that setting. When we look at vaccination rates, when we look at vaccination rates amongst 12 to 17-year-olds in the county, we have approximately 81% of 12 to 17-year-olds having received one dose, about 74% fully vaccinated. That's good, it's not enough to, it's not enough to stop transmission or stop in its tracks, but it's certainly a good level of, a good level of vaccination and one that I think allows us to, to move forward with high school and middle school with a modified quarantine option that relies solely on the masking. With elementary schools, I think we're in a different position. We see that, and while the, and the data here isn't as crisp, it becomes, it's been affected by that, by the state IT issue. But we see that the vaccination rate for, for one dose for the five to 11-year-olds are an elementary school cohort is somewhere in the 30 to 40% range. I don't have an exact number to give on that. And our, and our full vaccination rate is somewhere in the 10 to 15% range. It's a very different landscape to consider in terms of, in terms of going to that modified quarantine option for elementary schools. We certainly would, would like to see a much higher vaccination rate for two reasons. One, both to protect students, but also to, to help decrease the potential for spread at that level of vaccination, spread it just much easier, frankly. And then the other piece is, is around outbreaks. We do know that the state is looking to change the definition of outbreaks based on our experience with what we've been seeing with students. And we're, we're anticipating putting that into play at the top of the year. So in January, it will, it will allow more, more cohorts or more classrooms to stay in school. But outbreaks are still, are still situations where we, as the Health Department, do have to investigate that, do have to exercise quarantine authority. We are required to ensure that we are not promoting spread of, spread of, the uncontrolled spread of disease in any of these, any of these types of settings where, as I mentioned before, there are more vulnerable individuals, schools included, and I listed some of the other types of facilities that, that, that qualify that way as well. So I just wanted to put that context out. I know that there, there's a opportunity for discussion, so I will stop there.
Dr. Kalyana Raman, thank you so much, and thank you again for taking time to be with us. You've been described as the ninth member of our Board, but thank you again, we appreciate it, especially on such short notice. I will now turn to my colleagues to allow them to begin to ask questions. So with that, Ms. Shawheim, would you go ahead?
Yes, thank you, thank you for being here, Dr. Kalyana Raman, it's good to see you again. I do have two questions for you. You mentioned that there are sort of three paths, the test-to-stay, the weekly testing, and the decreased quarantine with mass usage. I think the overwhelming majority of this Board wants there to be more kids in school and less kids that are healthy partaking of our quarantined instruction. I think, I think I could say that, I think I could speak on behalf of the Board when I think all of us want more kids to be in school. And so you referenced the vaccination rates being quite low for the five to 11-year-olds. However, the, if we're, if we, if we can't, if we can't live up to what our, and I'm assuming we will because it was the action of the Board, but if we can't live up to our, our motion the other week that passed seven to one, what are we prepared to do to keep as many elementary school students in school? Can we implement a robust test-to-stay or weekly testing program? And how would that be funded? How would, do we have the, the staff for that? Can you elaborate more on what we're gonna do for the elementary-age kids? Because I think, I think, I think we're right where we need to be for middle and high school, but I also worry about our youngest students being home for 10 days, some of them without a parent, managing quarantine, learning on their own.
So I'll, I'll start and then turn it over to Dr. Arlato pretty quickly. In terms of the test-to-stay and the weekly testing, you know, these are options that we've discussed with Dr. Arlato and its team, and the, the logistics of doing that is really, that's a, that's a school system question. We're happy to help advise on how to implement that. And so I'm gonna turn it over to Dr. Arlato to talk a little bit more about what, you know, our discussions on this.
Yeah, thank you, Dr. Kay, and thank you, Mrs. Shaw. And we've discussed this on a number of occasions. The, well, I love the idea of test-to-stay. Operationally, we would need people and tests. And so we would have to have somebody in every one of our schools that is, that's available to do that test. That's not something that the school nurses can take on in their roles. And so we would have to find personnel. And as you well know, we're challenged right now across the board in finding personnel in a number of different positions. So I don't think that, that, that either test-to-stay or even weekly testing, we attempted to start a pilot with weekly testing, and we had such little interest from parents that wanted to voluntarily allow their child to be tested on a weekly basis that it just made no sense for us to move forward. That we did attempt that in a pilot phase, and there were just so, there weren't knee-takers. There were very few parents that were willing to allow their children to be tested on a weekly basis. So it, it provides some real operational challenges for us in, in accessing tests and then having personnel to conduct those tests.
Okay, hopefully, we can relook at weekly testing, given the motion that passed seven to one. I, I would assume that more people would take us up on that, given the changed landscape. But my second question back to Dr. Kalyana Raman is, you mentioned that the outbreaks definition will change at the top of the year. Can you educate us as to what that definition will be?
So that's being worked out at the, at the state level. So I can't give you insight into that at the exact moment, but I do know that that change is coming.
Okay, I really hope we can live up to the, to the motion that we, that we passed. I know all of us want our kids in school and want to avoid healthy students remaining home for 10 days. And I'm amongst those parents in that, in that thought. So thank you for joining us again tonight, and I'll, I'll yield back to the next colleague, thanks.
Thank you very much, Ms. Shawheim. Ms. Dent?
Madam President, I'd like to reserve my position till I hear everybody else's comments and thoughts, and then I will ask any other questions that I may have. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Dent. Mr. Silkworth.
Thank you, President Tobin. I, I think one of the, I know Dr. Kay mentioned it, one of the things that must be stressed is, I was looking at some data when it comes to cases by vaccination status. And if you take, well, it's kind of hard for you to see this, but the bottom line is, it's pretty clear that those folks that are vaccinated are having much more of an issue with COVID than, than others. So I guess my question is, piggybacks off of Ms. Shawheim's question. The CDC has in fact come out in support of test-to-stay. And, but please correct me if I'm wrong. What I'm hearing is that although test-to-stay may be the way to go, there's an issue with resources. Is that what I'm hearing?
There's, there's absolutely a resource issue. Can we get, my understanding is that, that getting access to the tests, that's something we would have to work through with Dr. Kay and his team to see if we can access enough tests. And then having personnel at every school, test-to-stay, depending on the design of the program, could be testing those students every day during the seven-day period. It could be on day three, five, and seven during a seven, during the seven-day period. And we would have to have the resources in order to, that we would have to have both the test kits and, and the availability of staff to do that, to conduct those tests for those students that have been identified as close contacts.
Right, well, it seems to me that as a Board, we'll have to do whatever we have to do in terms of trying to access resources, so that means that we may be needing to contact the State Department of Education. I've had contact today with one of our local senators. County Executive is sitting on some money. And it just seems to me that if test-to-stay is the way to go in whatever form that we decide, that we need to try to find the resources to be able to do that. I have a question, the second question for Dr. Kay, and that is that in a lot of the scenarios we're talking about, if negative and asymptomatic, can you give us a definition of what you consider asymptomatic to be? Because some people might totally have different definitions of what that is.
There's a, excuse me, there's a, there's a flow sheet we follow on symptoms to, to determine who's asymptomatic, who's not. We recognize that particularly during this time, somebody may have one symptom, like for instance, a cough or a runny nose, right? Very common among students and frankly amongst all of us. And so our, our, our health staff go through that, go through that checklist. So it's not, it's not a free-form kind of question, we are going through that pathway.
Right, well, I know we're going through that, but as I look at some of the scenarios that are being offered, it talks about if negative and asymptomatic, the student may remain in the classroom, but who's making that determination about asymptomatic? So I may have other questions, Dr. Tobin.
That, that, that's left to, of course, first and foremost, the parent, Mr. Silkworth. The parent should be, of course, there with their child. And if they are, are appearing at all symptomatic, since the beginning of this, we've asked them to keep their children home. We've also, during the course of the day, children might not feel well. And so teachers and other staff have identified students that become symptomatic during the school day, and those students are sent down to the school nurse.
Right, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Silkworth. Ms. Frank?
I will try to keep my questions brief, thank you. To Mr. Silkworth's comments, I would absolutely support using financial resources at our disposal to help with this in any fashion, but I would be concerned about using our school nurse, nursing staff if they have been the, the testers from the beginning, they were out there on day one, they have been the vaccine clinic. I've talked to many nurses, they're, they're very burned out. And I think that if we did some sort of test-to-stay, we need to keep that in mind, that these, these folks have been nonstop since this started, and that this shouldn't be left to them. I would just, my question for Dr. Kalyana Raman is, as we discuss the percentage of hospitalizations, can you tell me the number of, or the percentage of hospitalizations due to COVID in our county?
Yeah, so first of all, I appreciate the comments about our school health nurses and staff. They, they have obviously their core functions, which they do every day, irrespective of COVID, and then COVID on top of that. In terms of hospitalizations in the county, as I mentioned, we've got about 100 combined between the two hospitals. Right now, that represents, I can't give you a fixed percentage, but I can tell you in terms of capacity, that added another about 15 to 20% of capacity for hospitals, roughly. And generally, they run at about 70% to be able to handle temporary surges in volume, not long-term, like what we're talking about, surges in volume. It's the reason the Governor put into place the, the levels of action that he did last week at 1,200 and 1,500 aggregate COVID hospitalizations in the state. And we've already passed that 1,200 mark. On Friday, we passed that, and as of today, we're at about 1,350. So that is, that is continuing to rise fairly steeply.
And in our county, what percentage of hospitalizations for pediatric COVID?
I don't have the number for our, our county, but I do have the, the, at the state level, it's somewhere around 30 or so, at least as of mid-last week.
30% of our?
Thirty, thirty total number.
Thirty total, okay. Yeah, I said that was a little high, 30 total pediatric. Okay, that, that was my question, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Frank. Ms. Corkedell?
Thank you, Dr. Tobin and Dr. Kalyana Rama for joining us. I, I wanted to bring up the release from MSD that was released today. I don't know how many of my colleagues had a chance to read it. And I would, if I could, just read a couple of brief sentences from it because I believe it would well frame my question for Dr. Kalyana Rama, my first one. And this is a quote, "Across the state, we must keep schools open for in-person instruction to ensure excellent educational opportunities and strong outcomes for all students, especially those who have been historically underserved and most impacted by the suspension of in-person learning," said State Superintendent of Schools Mohammed Shadri. "This is a strong consensus from researchers that schools can and should stay open for in-person instruction, and that school leaders must use every tool at their disposal to do so, given the adverse effects closures have on students and their families. We have seen the devastating impact of school closures and long-term virtual instruction on student learning here in Maryland and across the country. When COVID-19 transmission increases and health measures become necessary, schools must be the last places to close. With unprecedented federal and state resources and tools, we can keep schools safely open for in-person, full-time learning." And then he goes on to elaborate of some of the outcomes, objectives, reiteration of mask uses as a mitigating strategy. So this is more affirmation of what I believe we have been consistently hearing from our, from our state partners. And so, Dr. Kalyana Rama, and I know it was incredibly helpful for us in decision-making as well as for the community to be better prepared and to recognize. And I'll put one more caveat, given the absence of the regular town halls that we used to see from some of our elected officials, from, you know, the County Executive's Office, et cetera, et cetera, because we were in a state of emergency. That has been taken away from the public. And so I believe, I have heard from many folks that our school board meetings have become one of a couple available few resources. So with that in mind, are you able to share or are you preparing to be able to be shared with the school board a set of standards by which would determine when we are in that dire situation? And further to help us track how the numbers are going to inevitably affect so that we are not reading about in the newspaper, so to speak, I guess, about how all of a sudden, things are changing. And I know we can't, you may not be able to give the precision, but we did have some really good, good numbers. We had yellow zones and red zones. So we had a, a nice visual understanding of where we are and where we don't want to be and where we do. Thank you.
So we've been firmly ensconced in the red zone for quite a while now. I think that is our challenge, and you know, we've Um, I think that is our challenge and, y- you know, we've seen in, in prior instances where the CDC has had to create additional reds to convey even greater severity. I believe we're in that position. You know, I, I mentioned at the top of this conversation of hospitalizations and our outbreaks and that those are, are clear indicators of what is occurring now. Give us one example, I've been asking my staff about how many cases are we seeing? How many cases in students in ACPS today have we seen? And I've gotten an updated number, every few hours, that number keeps going up and we're over two hundred and fifty. And this was probably about an hour and a half ago, and I have, sure you, it has gone higher since then. That, so, you know, we, we may not have a case rate and we may not have a color guide because we've already have matched out that color guide of where we are. It's why we today as a health department, we put out a public health board, um, to indicate the severity of the situation that we're in. As we're entering the holidays, as we're entering what is typically the worst of cold and flu season, which is when COVID is also going to be most active and as we are going to see more Omicron cases. And so I think that, and, and it's why I also said, you know, I think that as we, as we look to keep students in classrooms, we also have to understand the challenging moment that we're going to have, just in terms of the sheer number of cases, right? Which we are all in agreement, you know, children who are positive for COVID, or, you know, anybody who's positive for COVID is going to have to stay home and isolate, right? And we're seeing more and more of that. And I think our, you know, what, what I'm just very honestly, what I am concerned about is that we really need to balance in this moment the effects of quarantine versus not doing that and exposing ourselves to greater outbreaks that will take more, that will take more children and put them i- in, in quarantine, right? And one thing that I want to take this opportunity to say is that the more kids who are vaccinated, the more likely are they are going to be to be able to stay in school, stay safe, and also are not really eligible for quarantine. Cause you'll remember that even before considering these options, if you're vaccinated, you did not have to quarantine. It's really, you know, the focus was on unvaccinated individuals. In the outbreak setting, then all of a sudden, everybody gets pulled into that. So if we can avoid outbreaks, we can avoid quarantining, considering quarantining vaccinated children. So I'd really, I would really ask that the board and then really promote vaccinations among students. That's going to, that's going to be one of the most important things to keep kids in the classroom.
Thank you, and as a follow-up to that, you had mentioned, um, some testing possibilities. And, um, I, I, I'm not, I cannot recall because we, you know, we get brief summaries, we don't get documents or anything like that or PowerPoints to reference back to when we get our updates, um, from Dr. Alato. But there was, um, a, um, a change on the CDC website as it related to PCR testing. Um, and that they were, as of December thirty first, withdrawing the requests to seek authorization and withdrawing from a considerate, being considered a EUA. I don't know what that, you know, it sounds like a nice way of, you know, backing it out, I guess. And so, could you go over what tests we are using currently in school? Um, and what the game plan is December thirty first, when we return to school, if we are? Um, and does that affect our, um, supply chain? If we chose to explore, um, uh, different options or just flat out needed it um, out of necessity for, because of case rates and such?
So I'm not quite sure what you're referring to in terms of the EUA and the test. If you, if you send that to me, I will be able to take a look at that. Um, there are a lot of tests that have been approved, um, so, y- you know, it really matters the specificity on that.
It was under the lab alerts and basically the PCR testing, the, the summary that I, I read on it was, um, on the site was that basically there are some tests that are no longer going to be, I guess, um, considered usable or should be used. And so I was wondering if that's one of them. So when we get back, I, I thought it would be good to know if what we're using and that lab test is using for our sports program and our employee programs on, um, Vaxxer Test is using that particular test. Because I, I believe in the details, and I'm not an expert or anything, but, um, I, I know they try to put that information as plain English as possible, but my understanding was that, uh, it's not considered appropriate to use, um, based on its outcomes.
I will, I will take a look at that, but the, the, the last thing that I remember about that, it has to do with more of it being a lab technical change and updating their PCR methods as opposed to a test going away. Um, I, I don't believe this is going to have any significant implication for, for us or anybody at this point. But, um, like I said, if you can send me that specific link, I'd be happy to look at that, um, and, and give you my assessment.
I will definitely do that. I know that you were included in the email that, um, was originally forwarded to me as an alert. So I will, um, I will push that out to you specifically. But yeah, I, I think it's important for us to recognize, number one is the state is saying loud and clear that they feel that we could capture resources, uh, which does make me question, um, our lack of in the current, um, with all of the impacts that it has had, um, particularly on our, our administrators of the schools. Um, because they have, they can't do both jobs. And, um, that remains a high level concern of mine. Uh, and I think, um, making sure that we have good tests in place and are leveraging every single available resource, um, that would be key. Uh, i- is there a reason though, Dr. Kalyanarama, why the school? This is my last question, is more of a follow-up of why this school system, you know, a- all of our, um, recreational athletics, all of the businesses for the most part in the county, um, and in around the area and civic organizations are being well-supported by the health department. And I'm not aware that they have to use so, so many staff resources. Could you explain why the school system is placed in that unique position? Because I know in the beginning, we talked about this when COVID first hit a little bit, um, and in those coming summers, but more of a refresher and update, as it were, as to that situation. And can the health sta- department start hiring, for example, people, give us a hand or something? Cause we're not supposed to be in health business, but, which I know you know, a- and have been working hard on, but, um, nonetheless.
I'm a little confused as to what way we haven't been supporting the school system.
Uh, you have been very supportive, Dr. Kalyanaraman, but, um, I'm not aware that, um, you know, for example, that businesses are doing contact tracing. Um, you, you know, we have principals and vice principals who are, um, on the phone from what I'm being reported on and principals non-stop, um, till ten, nine, ten o'clock at night, uh, working on contact tracing, that's what I'm referring to specifically. Which I believe led us to some of this decision that we had made of recent. Um, because that's where the impacts are happening more than anything. Um, there's a lot we can't control, um, but the duties assigned to our workers are. And so, i- if you wouldn't mind.
Sure, so ju- just to be clear, when they're on the phone at ten o'clock, it's usually with our staff? Who are up just as late doing that work with them. So, when we talk about contact tracing, there's a reason I mentioned, um, men's and, mentioned specific settings, school is one of them. When we do contact tracing in general, our staff are reaching out to whoever is positive and asking them who their contacts are. When that happens in the school setting and there's a student, we are not going to call a six-year-old or even a fourteen-year-old up and ask them who their contacts were in school. Because it is a setting, we work with that setting, so the school system, to say, who are your contacts? And that is the piece that ACPS has to do, we can't do that because we don't know the school system. And to, as comparison, if there's somebody positive in a nursing home, we do the same thing with the nursing home. Administrators, clinical staff, we do the same thing in, in a correction setting with the corrections officers. We do the same thing in an assisted living facility, so we're not really doing anything different for school that we wouldn't do for another comparable setting, which is working with the folks who, who are operating that system to facilitate the contact tra- uh, contact tracing. It, it is different in a business, right? Because those are adults, those are adults and we, well, let's pick a random thing, somebody works at a, a restaurant. We're going to ask that person, who are you contact, who are you in contact with? But even with larger businesses that have certain restrictions in terms of who's coming and going, we'll work with businesses around that contact tracing. So the school system, yes, there is a burden on it, but there is a burden on similar systems that operate in a similar fashion, nursing homes, assisted living facilities, hospitals, higher education, um, homeless shelters, corrections, and so on and so forth.
Thank you, um, I just, you know, that is, I, I think one of the biggest snags of, of it all for, for a lot of folks because it does, um, it's having an impact. And you can well imagine, um, our administrators having to differentiate the role as principal and the role as sharing bad news, um, as such. Um, but, uh, yeah, I just, uh, would encourage everybody to continue to look for things. It is the same situation that you reported to us at the beginning and onset of COVID, when we tried to reopen schools last year. Um, but I think it's good to make sure that we keep it framed and in the forefront so that I, I think it helps reduce and alleviate some of the, uh, the stressor points and assumptions that people make as to what's going on. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Corkedell. Uh, Ms. Omasore.
Thank you, and thank you, Dr. Kalyanaraman, for being here with us. I'm sure you're going to hear that a lot over the course of the night. So my first question would be, and I'm not, I'm guessing we're going to delve more into this as the night goes on. But when it comes to Omicron, I know there's not a lot, um, known for certain about this new variant. Um, but I just want to pick your brain about what health officials do know at this time. So related to vaccines, um, what is the time period for when vaccines start to lessen in their efficacy? And since a lot of our, well, a lot of our high school students were able to take or were eligible to take the vaccine early in the school year. And I've heard things like two-month periods for Johnson and Johnson, six months for Pfizer. So as we pass that threshold, when we talk about students being vaccinated, will we prefer that they have the booster? When we talk about contact tracing, even though with our new quarantine policy, um, that might not be as useful. But when we're trying to track students, will we rely more on them having a booster shot as we meet that vaccine? Um, I don't want to say wearing off or expiration date, but that's the only terminology I can think of. We rely more on that secondary shot than we would the initial one as we go throughout the school year.
So, I think a, a good way to think about the vaccines, the COVID vaccines, and I'll get to Omicron in a second. Um, but a good way to think about the vaccines is that, um, some vaccines provide lifelong protection. Some have shorter timeframes, is the reason we get flu boosters or tetanus boosters, right? The immunity that they offer start slowly decreases over time. Some of those time scales are different with the flu shot, we do that every year. What we're finding with the, um, uh, with the Pfizer and the Moderna is that at around the si- at the six-month point is when we recommend the booster, because we start to see a, a more significant decrease in the protection that the vaccine offers at that time. And that kind of is roughly in sync with what we thought might happen, particularly because it's in that category of viruses that are more similar to the flu in terms of how they operate, right? They're always changing, they're always mutating, you need that updated level of protection. Um, and so that gets us to Omicron, Omicron i- is simply another variant. It's a variant that we care about because it is more transmissible. What we're seeing is that it does move faster in populations, it does transmit faster than Delta. Um, we're still trying to understand the severity. Um, we know that people who've been infected with COVID do not have as much protection to Omicron as those who have been vaccinated. We do see that. What we're trying to ascertain is the severity level and is the severity, um, what is the severity if you have not been vaccinated and what is the severity if you have been vaccinated? Um, we're, it's a little tough to tell right now, it's, it's preliminary data, but it looks like the severity is pretty high if you have not been vaccinated. And that getting vaccinated does decrease the severity of Omicron. But this is one of those things where each day there's more coming out. I would recommend to all students, um, certainly anybody seventeen and younger got the Pfizer vaccine. That's the only one that was available in that age range. Um, and so if it's been more than six months since your second dose, please get your booster, now is a good time. Um, and it's important to keep that protection up, particularly as we heading into the, into the dead of cold and flu season. Um, there may be a few eighteen years and older who got the Moderna, although I'm not sure how many there are, but the same thing applies.
Alright, so I guess, uh, simply put, my question would be, if you're a teen who got your vaccine in March and it's been, we're, well, I'm not going to say we're coming up to March, but it is only three months away. In March of twenty twenty-two, you have not gotten a booster, your only vaccination was that of a complete year later. Will that be enough to keep a student from, um, being quarantined or being seen as at risk? If they are in close contact, will that protection be enough? Or will the new policy be, hey, you need to get a booster in order for that protection to be at the level we need for you not to be considered a risk if you're near someone with COVID?
So at the functional level, your protection will be far lower and you'll be better off getting it. At a more technical, like regulatory level, um, we're absolutely looking at, um, and when I say we, I mean at the federal level and state level, when does boo- when do boosters become required as meaningful evidence of vaccination, right? At some point, if enough time has elapsed, that initial vaccination series is not sufficient anymore. Um, and so when do you need to get that? So I don't know when that is going to change, that's not a decision we would make at a county level. Um, that's a decision that would come more from a state or more likely at the federal level, but that is absolutely on the table for discussion.
Alright, that's all I have for now.
Thanks, Ms. Omasore, um, Ms. Ellis.
Thank you, um, real quick, I, I just want to, um, elaborate, um, very briefly on my understanding, um, of the contact tracing we have going on right now. Uh, this isn't really a question, I have a couple of questions, but, uh, just anecdotally, I, I have a student who was identif- or identified as a close contact outside of school and, um, my student was contacted by the health department. Another time, my student was identified as a close contact inside a school and was contacted by a school administrator. So I think that that is, um, what Ms. Corkedell was speaking to in terms of who's, who's doing, um, those calls. But, um, back to the discussion of, I, I hear some concerns about, um, um, you know, perhaps still trying to implement test to stay. And I'm, I'm always um, in favor of being as safe as possible, um, reasonably so. And, um, I'm, I believe you said, and correct me if I'm wrong, um, we have thirty pediatric cases, COVID cases, hospitalizations, sorry, um, in the state. But you don't know, um, which, if any of those are in Anarondo County? Did I understand that correctly?
This was thirty about, at least a week ago, when our hospitalizations were about a thousand in the state. Um, I don't have the breakdown, just, you know, from the numbers, we're about a tenth of the population, we tend to track along that line, so.
Right, and we certainly, okay, thank you. We certainly don't want any students, any children in the state, um, hospitalized, um, with illness of any sort. But I, I assume that that number is not high compared to what we have in a typical flu outbreak in the state.
It, it is, it is higher, the, so, so COVID does cause a greater hospitalization level than flu, generally by at least tenfold.
So thirty, eh, during a flu outbreak, thirty would be a high number throughout the entire state of.
We, we, we don't see anywhere near these volumes for fluid missions, uh, a- at all.
Okay, I'd be interested in.
I have to share with you some data on what the. I have to share with you some data on what the flu
That would be great.
Like compared to COVID admissions.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I'll I'll see if I have Maryland-specific data, but I could certainly share that at a larger level.
That would be very helpful. Thank you. Um, right, so I'm concerned about um, I I think we have seen that we have many, many hundreds upon hundreds of students, healthy students being kept out of school. And that's, I think, the cause of the board action um, last week. And um, so um, I'm a little concerned about the the resources on the test to stay um, program, um, and you know, the fact that it's gonna con- continue to um, to stress our administrators um, who are just simply overwhelmed right now, and we've we've heard from them. Um, and I'm concerned about keeping, again, healthy students out of school. Um, and finally, um, you said, I think in our twelve to seventeen age range, um, at least eighty percent have had one dose, seventy-one percent are fully vaccinated. And you indicated that that's not a high enough level um, to to be comfortable with um, not continuing with some sort of um, monitoring of close contacts, if I understood you correctly. Um, and I'm trying to understand, are are we still um, realistically looking to stop the spread versus protect the infected from serious illness? Because I and and I'd like to know what the current numbers are, and I don't know what information you have there. I would love to see more data as far as how many of our um, current cases in the current outbreak throughout the county are fully vaccinated um, individuals, because I I know at least anecdotally, many of the people I know in recent weeks who have been infected have been fully vaccinated. So are we still trying to to knock this thing out? Or are we, or when is it time to start to learn to live with this? And you know, take the, take reasonable precautions in that sense versus trying to stop this thing?
So I do wanna correct something you said. So I did note that I did note the vaccination amongst twelve to seventeen-year-olds was about eighty-one percent for one dose and seventy-four percent for for both doses. I did say actually that I thought it was reasonable for the modified quarantine for that age group precisely because so many had been vaccinated. But I also did say that at that level, there will still be transmission. It's not enough to really cut down the spread. So both of those things are true.
I guess that's my question is, i- if we were at a hundred percent, do you think that then we will have no spread of COVID?
Then you would have it. So so you know, that's something that we have to that we are looking at is, we know that you have to get to at least probably ninety, ninety-five percent to get that population immunity effect, right? So do I think that would curtail transmission? Yes, that would bring it down significantly. Um, that uh, that level of vaccination only comes with mandates. Um, typically, we don't see vaccination levels rise about about eighty-five, maybe eighty-seven percent. Um, that last ten percent to fifteen percent takes a mandate. Um, and so, so I just wanted to clarify what I did say, and I and I contrasted that to our elementary school students whose vaccination rates understandably are are much lower, right? Because it was just approved, um, something like five, six weeks ago. Um, in terms of when do we learn to live with it, when do, does it become endemic? That's what we're working towards, right? Um, we're working towards it, and I think our challenge is that there are these, there are these waves of infection that come upon us. Um, nobody wants Omicron, nobody wants the Delta wave that's happening now, and we're trying to figure out what's the way we balance both of these. Uh, in this setting, both of these very legitimate concerns, right? How do we keep kids and staff safe? How do we keep kids in school? And you know, we're trying to, we're trying to sort through that and make sure that we have um, we have a balanced way to approach that while also recognizing just the larger situation that we're in right now.
Right. Okay, yeah, I mean, I think I understood you correctly. That's why I brought up the twelve to seventeen age group, because I know you were, you were indicating that there they have a higher rate of vaccination. And so that's, that's the part where it started to pique my interest about where, where are we trying to go with this? You know, are we, are we realistically going to stop the spread of of COVID? And I'm I'm still not.
I I think the way to think about, I think the way to think about this is that is that at least, you know, from a, from a public health standpoint and also from a school system standpoint, we have an obligation to every single child there. And one of the challenges we have is that for those students who are vaccinated, and it's a large proportion, but it's still only eighty percent who've had one shot, right? They're gonna be better protected the more of those layers of protection we take off. They're still gonna do okay. But that other twenty percent is gonna be exposed to more and more disease because we're taking those protections away. So how are we willing to balance? And yes, that eighty percent is the vast majority, but that twenty percent of kids is still a lot of kids, right? And that's, that's why this is a hard question is, what is the balance that we're willing to put on that? Because each of these ratchets downs in terms of level of protection creates more opportunity for spread. And frankly, the unvaccinated, whether it's students in the school setting or people in the population at large, are at greater and greater risk, right? And you know, we don't have the, we both operate in systems where we don't get to say, well, you do you. We are responsible for everybody. And so that is, that is why I wanna at least put on the plate what the trade-offs are that we're talking about. Doesn't mean you can't make a decision, but we have to walk into them with clear eyes as to what that trade-off is.
Okay, is at some point, I mean, individuals as adults are are the ones who are responsible for them themselves, I assume, and um,
We say that, but then we see our hospital systems get overwhelmed, and we have to then make a societal decision, right? Those individuals have said that, but they're still going to the hospital, and now those who want care, uh, don't, you know, did everything else are struggling to get care. So we, you know, we 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 continuously struggle with this idea that you may have your own choices and they affect you, but they also ripple out to others. And we do have to balance those.
Mm-hmm. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ellis. Um, so I'm gonna reserve the last spot for myself. Ms. Dent, did you wanna ask your question?
Yes, thank you. Uh, so my first one is more of a statement. Um, and so I really just wanna impart upon what we are doing today was uh, exactly what I was trying to get done in the beginning for us to have well thought out, well-informed information so that I can always uh, advocate for the people that I represent, which is all of the persons that have stakeholders. My question for you, um, uh, Dr. K, uh, I'm not gonna butcher your name up, uh, is more of we do have to get students in, um, we we do have to get through the season of the variant that we're in right now. I understand that. Uh, but at such time, there is a time for where we would have to revisit how much time is too much time for a student to be uh, out of stu- out of school. And so with all the research that I've done, there's about a forty-eight hour question or concern that happens to where you get from the time that you either take the test or if a person choose to uh, not take the test, that the um, symptoms um, of the of the um, uh, coronavirus kind of they they kind of bring them, um, what is the word I'm looking for? You you kind of know if you got it or you don't, right? Uh, it, uh, and my question for you, though, is that I I I honestly believe that five days is a long time, given that we've gotten enough research over the last year to know that students that are asymptomatic after about the first seventy-two hours don't necessarily have, you know, and that, and they don't have the symptoms, don't necessarily test positive, right? And so as a result of that, is there any research that you've done, or can you do some research to determine if five, eh, if five days is too many, is two days too less? What is the point to wear between those two to five days that a student that is asymptomatic could return back to school safely without the continued spread of perhaps potential spread of the COVID? That that's really where I'm at.
So I I I assume you're talking about somebody who's asymptomatic who's a close contact, correct?
Correct.
That, and that, you know, that's why the eh, a program like a test to stay program, which looks at a seven-day window uh, of testing within that seven-day window to ensure that we see from the beginning of this pandemic, we talked about the development of symptoms or or transmission, you know, transmission capability between two to fourteen days. And we've been shrinking that, that endpoint of fourteen days in and in and in, based on the fact that not the transmission cancer current day twelve or thirteen, it's just much less likely, and we're trying to um, you know, we're trying to make that window as narrow as possible so people, we can um, decrease the like biggest bulk of the risk, but not eliminate all of it. And so that's why something like a test to say, you know, a seven-day uh, allows that. That's why something like the quarantine option with mask, you know, with masking allows kids to return, right? Um, as long as everybody was masked on that encounter. But that masking is really critical to that, to that, to that reduction in transmission. So I think, you know, this is a reflection of different ways to try to get at how do we decrease the burden on students from quarantining while also keeping the risk of transmission lower as well and not taking uh, not not increasing that unnecessarily.
I, so let me make you make, make my question a little bit clearer. Um, my my point, my problem is, is that I'm really trying to understand. I understand a test to stay. And I understand seven-day window. I'm asking, is there any research that's been doing? So it's a seven-day window. I I get that. But all of the research says two days, two, you know, a number, five, seven, whatever that number is. I'm asking, is there a way for us to do research to find out that students that did return back to school after that window? Uh, and maybe this is not a question for you, maybe it's a question for Dr. Arlato or whomever is doing the testing to find out that they test positive or not. And the reason why I'm asking that question is because if the the, from the comments that I've received, is that the bulk of the students are returning that are asymptomatic uh, never tested positive for COVID, even if they had contact tracing, if they was exposed to, they didn't test positive. So I think the intent here is for us to to keep students that are asymptomatic in school. If there are parents out there that don't want to test, I get it. There's a rule for that, too. But I just wanna know, is there any quantitative data that's been doing on students? And maybe, again, maybe it's not you, maybe it's more from the school perspective, that they're finding out that students that are staying out of school really wasn't asymptomatic, took the test, didn't test positive, and they're still missed a a a a serious amount of time out of school, and we keep doing this over and over again. That's the cycle that I'm trying to get my question to.
So that that's not something that we could do. Those those types of studies are being done at statewide levels. Um, in fact, the CDC um, in endorsing tests to stay, you know, just this past week, week, um, they put out a couple of studies. One was from Illinois, blanking on the state, the other state. Um, those require much larger groups of students and um, frankly, the power of a state health department or even the CDC to be able to analyze that data. So that's not a, that's not a study we're gonna be able to do, unfortunately. Um, but what the, what that data shows, both from the couple of studies that were just published and also from previous ones, is that test to stay is fairly successful in keeping kids in classrooms without increasing the rate of transmission because it's catching those who do turn positive. I don't know that they looked at testing beyond that timeframe to see who converts, because remember, these are not experiments. These are more real-world applications and looking at the data. So um, the resources to test even after the test to stay window really just weren't there.
Okay, and then my last question is, is that you said for the ones that did uh, was exposed or um, to um, a positive COVID ex, uh, person that was exposed to, or a positive uh, result, those individuals were um, did the contact tracing, they came um, they were given the timeframe that they had to be away from the school. As a result of that, um, if they do test within that, say, two to five-day window, the suggestion is for them to continue to wear the mask even after they return back to school. Is that accurate?
So the the recommendation is that anybody who chooses close contact should be wearing masks for fourteen days after all of their interactions outside of the household.
Okay, and then my last question for is Dr. Arlato. The policy that we have is for them to be in school. They're masked up anyway. Is that accurate?
Yes, currently, all students are to be masked in all schools in the state of Maryland. That's an MS, that's a state Department of Education uh, rule that was put in place. And it's in place until, I believe, February twenty-fifth is when that sun sets. And a decision will have to be made to either extend it or alter it or eliminate it in some way.
Okay, alright, thank you. That's all my questions, Dr. Tobe.
Thank you very much, Ms. Dent. Um, so a couple of things I wanna say before I ask questions. Um, so summarizing what I'm hearing uh, from my colleagues in various ways, I think, is the concern that what we have now with regard to quarantine is a really blunt instrument in some ways, um, which you've, you've illuminated Dr. Kanyaraman and Dr. Arlato, the reasons for it. But the fact remains that we've got a situation where we have students who are losing critical time in school after a very long period where a lot of time was lost. Uh, speaking for my own district, it is the most vulnerable students already who are the most likely to also then not be able to have parents at home with them and not be able uh, or have parents who have to choose between keeping their job and staying home with their kids. Um, and that's a a a lot of uh, difficulty to put on, in some cases, a remarkably young child. Um, and so as you've appropriately said, Dr. Kanyaraman, this is about balance. Um, but that is part of what we have to balance here. Um, a a a certain amount of harm on that side that is occurring. Uh, the other thing I I want to say is um, it, as has been mentioned tonight, the CDC is talking about test to stay, and I believe, I read it once earlier today, but in the statement that came from State Superintendent Chodary uh, from the MSD earlier today, there was in fact a reference to test to stay in there as a possible layer. Um, and so I think it's pretty clear that um, we, and I say we as a board, we as a district, we as a state um, are going to need to work to figure out what it's gonna take to offer schools what they need to support test to stay because um, we are now in the throes of Omicron. I suspect if I understand the way things work, there will be other variants. Um, and so we are going to have to navigate these situations uh, as they keep coming, unfortunately. Um, it is also my understanding that the more people that get vaccinated, uh, the less likely we get these variants moving through the system. Um, and so clearly vaccination is, we've been told for a long time, is the the best tool we've got right now. Um, and so it does seem to me that uh, none of us want to see outbreaks, but for those who are concerned about their child's school having an outbreak and being shut down, their child's uh, athletics having an outbreak and being shut down, the 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 best answer to that is vaccination. Um, and so I I I think that message continually needs to be given. This is something people can make a decision about and control uh, their own situation to some extent. Um, my couple of questions are about some of the details, and to some extent, this goes back uh, more to Dr. Arlato's earlier uh, comments. Um, so, Dr. Arlato, you had mentioned at the uh, outset that um, there are other agencies, obviously, that uh, are in a position to quarantine children, whether it's, it's Parks and Recs or others. Um, what would be the communication on that? So in other words, if a student in before care or after care uh, is deemed a close contact and is required to quarantine, will that information be given to the school? Uh, so that we are aware of that?
Yes, so it it um, in general, Dr. Tobin, and it's a good question, it depends on the relationship we have with that at, with that outside entity. So in terms of before care and after care, Rexon Park So in terms of before care and after care, Rexon Park, we've got a fabulous, um, um, uh, relationship and they would let us know if a student tests positive and that they're doing contact tracing and that students won't be going to school. Um, and so the, that they're going to be asked to quarantine or isolate. So they'll let us know that. But if it's, uh, an entity that we don't have a relationship with, or a family was contacted, they would, I, they would have to let us know that. We wouldn't know that otherwise.
Okay. Um, with regard to contact tracing and the discussion earlier that that will somehow uh, go away if we are to implement the motion as it was passed, uh, by the board. Um, I'm, I'm curious about any additional options. In other words, um, would it be possible to have an alert go, simply go to, I mean, in the case of an elementary school, uh, a child in your child's class has tested positive. That's it. There's nothing about close contacts, there's nothing about, uh, any of that information. It's simply an alert that tells a family that this has occurred in their child's class and therefore that family could make a decision if there's a particularly vulnerable person in their home or whatever. And just additionally to that, I understand it's a little different when you're talking about middle and high school students because they go between classes. But I guess the, the equivalent there might be something that's triggered, uh, triggers that particular student's schedule and therefore triggers, again, a similar alert simply to people who have children in those classes that says, okay, um, one student in one of your child's classes has tested positive. Is that something we could do?
That we're going to be doing that.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, we've already, we've been planning that, we've, we've already constructed letters. Um, we'll work with Dr. K and his team to make sure that it meets all their guidelines. But we're, of course, we're, we, we're not going silent, Dr. Tobin and members of the board. We're, we're, we're not going into a closet and going silent on COVID. We will absolutely let families know that there was a, um, uh, we, early on in our process, we had close contact letters, positive letters, and what we called a potential exposure letter. Very early on in this, back in 2020 and early 2021. Um, and so we're going to basically going back to have reconstructed the potential exposure letter. So if it's an elementary classroom and there is a positive case, um, uh, everybody in that elementary classroom, those families will get a letter that says there was a positive case. Your child is asymptomatic, they could continue to go to school. Please keep a close eye on that and see if there are any changes over the next 10 to 14 days in their health, um, and any symptoms. And we recommend that you get your child tested regularly because they may have been exposed, a potential exposure. We will do the same thing for the middle and high school. Obviously, those students are taking six or eight classes in a day or over a two day period, A day, B day. And so we are working now feverishly, um, with our technology department to take this out of the hands of principals and assistant principals where we can automate this based on their schedule and the letters can go out. But these are things that my team's been working on since Wednesday's decision in the background. But we are not going silent on COVID. I want to make that abundantly clear.
I, I thank you for that. I assumed that was the case, but I thought it was important, uh, for everyone to hear that because I think, um, that's, that's actually very valuable information and potentially less confusing information for many, uh, many families. Um, I have an additional question, again, with regard to the balance that we're talking about tonight, which is, uh, with extracurricular activities. Um, uh, we currently have a situation where we have vax or test for high school athletes. Um, now there's an additional issue with that, which is that we know, we hear from staff, that the, 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 the athletic staff, that it's actually tremendously difficult to ma- manage that. Um, but I'll set that aside for the moment. Uh, with regard to our concerns, is there, um, any thought to instituting similar test or vax requirements for other extracurricular activities? I recently attended, uh, the first drama company performance at Annapolis High. Those kids had not been on a stage since March of 2020. Um, that is tremendously valuable to those students. Um, again, in, in, with an eye to keeping students in school, would you consider it, uh, valuable to consider that vax or test option for things like a drama company or a band or, uh, other similar activities for students?
We, we certainly could. The difference that we made was that our student athletes don't really have the opportunity to wear masks as they're competing, as they're practicing, as they're around their teammates and coaches, unless they're on the sideline or maybe in a huddle. We do ask if they're sitting on the sideline, say during a basketball game, to pull their mask up. Where in many of the other extracurriculars, they do have the opportunity. If you're in the robotics club, you can wear your mask while you're indoors and you're working with your teammate, your robotics teammates. Um, the same can be true if you're playing a string instrument, um, uh, or others. We have split masks that we have purchased for, um, uh, those, uh, that, that play woodwind or brass instrument. Um, uh, and we've asked that the students, if they're reciting their lines on stage, that they wear a mask. So that was the difference for us as we planned this out with Dr. K and his team. The separation was the, really the inability with the student athletes, um, to wear that mask consistently while they're participating in that activity where that is not necessarily, or, or it is the case in, um, uh, for many of the other extracurriculars where they can wear a mask or, and we encourage them to do so while they're inside, while they're inside the school.
Um, I mean, just to say, uh, you've got a musical going, people are not going to be singing with a mask on. So, you know, it's, it's that, that, that's what made me curious about that, so.
Understood, understood. So that person that is singing absolutely could take their mask off. And maybe the others on stage that are not at that time could leave their masks on. It is, um, uh, it, it is, there's no easy answer. Um, but we certainly, if we wanted to institute, um, um, uh, an attestation for those other extracurriculars uh, with regard to the vaccine status and if not vaccinated or choose not to tell us, like our student, our current student athletes, then we could add them possibly to the, um, uh, to the testing scenario that we've got going on now. Um, uh, and we'll have to, we would have to work with our vendor, um, in that to see if they have the ability to add staff because we would be adding a certain, a significant number of tests during the week for those, um, uh, those students participating in those extracurriculars.
Okay, thank you. Um, I see three hands. If it is okay with my colleagues, I will call on the people who each have, I'm assuming, one additional question. Um, because we've been relatively expeditious, but again, I don't want to, um, we have a lot of staff, Dr. Cony Raman, members of the public, and I want to be efficient. And I want to remind my colleagues again that there is an opportunity for additional follow-up questions, should they come to you following this session as well. Um, so I believe I'm going to go back in the order of the originals. So Ms. Schalheim, I'll call on you first.
Thank you. Yes, just one follow-up question for Dr. Callianah Raman. You know, data is really important. It's been really important in all of our lives, uh, over the last 20 months. It's important now. And we've had a distinct lack of data, uh, both from the county and the state over these last couple of weeks. I understand there was a, a hack and an IT issue. Uh, first we were told by the state, it will be the next day. We're now several weeks later, we still don't have, um, good information and no, uh, seven day, uh, case information, um, rolling average case information by, uh, county up on the site. And our, our own county's, um, case rate data has not been updated in, in quite some time. Um, this data is important to everybody and it's important for us in particular to help us, uh, communicate the need for vaccines, to communicate the need to continue masking appropriately, to, uh, to back up our decisions in every way. And so when can we expect that the county, I know you're not responsible at all for the state's issues, um, though perhaps you can poke at them a little bit. But, um, when could we expect a full return of all data, especially that case rate rolling average, um, data per hundred thousand to, to be alive and well and updated daily on their site as it was pre-December 3rd?
Our understanding is that MDH will be posting data tomorrow on case rates.
Okay. And what about the county site, which you absolutely have control of?
The county site, that data is dependent on the state giving it to us. So once we have it, we'll post it.
Okay. And so it'll go back up per county because there's, it's back up sort of as a statewide.
We don't have the county, we don't have the county level data, that's why we're not posting it yet.
Okay. All right. So you, you, but your understanding is that the state will be posting per county data, uh, for the case rates like they were pre-December 3rd tomorrow?
That's my understanding. And, and from a technical standpoint, once that data, we don't rely on the state posting it. Once that data is available in the background for us, we pull it, we post it. So as soon as it's available, we will.
Great. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Uh, I just, unfortunately, I, I forgot to mention that, that Dr. Cony Rama, Callianah Raman has to leave at 6:30. So, um, uh, if we run up to your last moment, Dr. Cony Raman, thank you again for giving us the time, uh, Mr. Silkworth.
Uh, thank you, President Tobin. Uh, Dr. Dr. K, uh, I've heard some reports that there are some students out in our communities that are making decisions to try to get COVID on purpose. Uh, so I, I, I think since we're public here, I, I would like you to, how would you respond to those students? If in fact, that is the case?
Yeah, no, we've certainly heard, heard that and I thank you for bringing that up, Mr. Silkworth. Um, kind of the, the chicken pox party theory of COVID. Uh, we, we don't want people doing that. That is dangerous both to their health, but more importantly, they are part of families and they're part of communities. And there are a lot of other people, you know, younger folks may be better able to tolerate COVID, but not all of them. And certainly their parents and grandparents are in much worse position to be able to tolerate that. So it's why we continue to push vaccination and don't want people to get COVID.
Absolutely. Thank you so much. I did want them to hear that from you.
Thank you, Mr. Silkworth. Uh, Ms. Corkedel, you've got the last couple of minutes.
Thank you, um, Dr. Tobin. So just real quick, um, I, I wanted to know a little bit, Dr. Callianah Rama, if you could share, um, uh, there was a comment that Dr. Arlato had made, um, a couple of meetings back when I had asked, um, you know, we, we try to make sure that our stakeholders are engaged and involved, um, whenever possible. And, um, I'm watching some of our neighboring districts be very successful in partnering with their health departments, um, and with the other agencies and getting the stakeholders in so that they can have sort of an interaction before some of the changes are made. So we can make those minor adjustments to make it as least impactful as possible and have more overall, you know, the, the equity model says ideally we get our stakeholders involved whenever possible. And I know that that was encouraged by our state superintendent, by, um, countless others as the, the key to success moving forward, especially with the hesitation growing in the communities. Could you share, um, any, um, updates as to what your department or the county executive or you and Dr. Lada, or Arlato are planning to help folks navigate in ways of community engagement and reaching out to the stakeholders to ensure that we are connecting with them and recognizing their needs and, uh, what that will look like in the coming months? No dates, I'm not asking for dates. But, um, I, I do get concerns from folks that, um, a health decision, I believe that if I remember correctly, Dr. Arlato stating, it's a health decision. And I had asked what we had done to reach out to stakeholders. And although I understand his intent was not to shut everybody out, it did raise concerns as it relates to some health decisions that it sounds like we're going to need to continue to make. And last year, I know we had raised a group, um, to help work with some folks. And I'm just wondering what we're doing, uh, for that as we continue to have to navigate on the dime.
Not clear if you're, are you asking me what outreach we've been doing related to schools?
Yeah, in other words, our, well, a- as these health decisions get made and everything, I noticed like, for example, when Rexon Parks came out with the new protocols, there was, um, multiple sentences in that news release uh, stating that it was a collaborative effort between the health department, Rexon Parks, and the stakeholders, such as the parents who were involved, the volunteers, the coaches who were involved. So likewise, I was wondering what we either should be doing as an agency, um, and what we can be doing to ensure that stakeholder engagement, um, throughout some of this. Um, sort of that grows and glows feedback. Um, and do you have any plans to engage our stakeholders, um, directly or in cooperation with Dr. Arlato? Or maybe Dr. Lado is planning something and, and you'll help quarter, you know, you'll help out with it. But I, I'm wondering when we reach out to the folks that this is affecting before the decision, when possible, like, it sounds like we've been planning stuff for weeks. And my, my apologies for taking that extra minute to clarify for you, but you were asking. Um, some of these are conversations that have been happening for weeks and months. And I've heard, I heard that phrase a lot. So when will the stakeholders have engagement, um, in, in these matters? Especially given how personal it is, it's, it's, it's about their kids. Um, uh, and, you know, that's very personal for parents.
Mrs. Mrs. Corkedel, if I could, again, if I, if I understand your question, our plan is to push out information about this decision the board had made and then how we operationalized, um, this week so that all of our families know what this will look like coming into the new year. So when they return from the winter break, um, uh, as you're well aware, the motion and decision that was made said that this change would occur in 2022. So that will begin on the third day of January when we return from our winter break. Our plan is to push information out. Um, we purposely did not push anything out today because of this meeting and will push something out to our, uh, all of our families, um, as well as all of our staff. So everybody understands, um, how we'll move forward, beginning with January 3rd.
I appreciate that. I was referring more to some of our like neighboring counties who have had town halls um, and listening sessions so that when we get to this moment in time, we have already had that opportunity of, of getting the feedback. And some of the things and plans that you, uh, discussed with us tonight have been in the works for weeks and months in conversation. And so, um, I ask again, when and where will our stakeholders play a role in this? I understand that we made a specific decision and some of that is, um, I, I will at least say for me, um, in, as a representative of some of our stakeholders and relying on the information I am receiving from them and yourself. But, uh, overall, I am not aware of stakeholder engagement in these decisions. And so I think that's, I mean, that's part of our whole equity lens and how we tend to operate. So that's what I'm referring to. I understand that the dissemination of specific information related to our decision, that is separate from my question. My question relates to the things that were brought up.
Ms. Corkedel, I'm gonna, I'm gonna jump in because I know Dr. Cony Raman needs to leave. I think, uh, what you're raising is a bigger issue that we can follow up on with regard to, um, a process, quite frankly. And that might be something that we continue to engage in discussion about. Um, Dr. Cony Raman, thank you very much again for taking the time. about. Um, Dr. Conley Raman, thank you very much again for taking the time to be with us. It was hugely, I'm speaking for myself, and I think for my colleagues. It was tremendously helpful. Um, you've given us a lot to think about, as I indicated at the beginning. Uh, to my colleagues, uh, obviously, there's an opportunity now for things that may have emerged in your thinking tonight to follow up uh, with additional questions, if you have them with Dr. A lotto or Dr. Conley Raman and his staff. Um, and uh, we as a group will probably need to consider following up on some of this, but that will be for a further discussion. Um, and so I think that has brought us to the end of our session. I want to thank everyone who attended uh, in the public. I want to thank everybody for attending tonight on very short notice. Uh, I know this was tremendously helpful to me. Um, I hope it was helpful to others, and uh, I hope everyone has a good night. So, thank you.